Okay, can I ask everyone to stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one inch under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I know it's October and it's a little, feels like snow could be so far away, but the fact that we only meet once a month, I do just want to start saying what our snow policy, in case you are assigned a public hearing for next month's meeting, in the event of snow, if town hall is closed, then the meeting is canceled, there is no make-up meeting. Your public hearing that would have been on for November would just be pushed off another month. All right, so just in the instance that, you know, you have a public hearing next month. We do have, we have a couple sets of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August thirteenth as amended?
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the minutes of September ninth, do I have a motion to approve?
As amended. So, some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good, so we're caught up with minutes. You'll notice on our agenda here, we have meeting dates for two thousand and fourteen. Two of them are Wednesdays, one because of the primary elections in September, and the other because of the November Veterans Day holiday. So do I have a motion to approve our schedule of meeting dates for two thousand and fourteen?
Seven. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All held at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Jim, yes, all held at seven o'clock. All right, with that being said, we're going to move on to our regular order of business. We're going to start with public hearings. This is, these are the appeals that the board has already reviewed, where we are looking for public comment. And you, as neighbors, probably have more information for us that we want to consider and hear. So you would be welcome, invited to comment on those appeals at the appropriate time. And then we'll go to a reviews, which are for the most, actually for all of them, they're the first time we're seeing them. So, these are all new applications that the board will review. So let's start with, we do have one adjourned public hearing. Appeal three six one eight Meyer, William C. Meyer, Forest Spring, Meadow Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a forty-five-foot rear line variance for a proposed eleven-foot by sixteen-foot garden shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene in the public hearing?
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, this is an application where the board has reviewed it numerous times now. There is, it was brought to the board's attention that the neighbor behind this property has a dispute as to where the property line is. We have asked the applicant to go back to his title company to get in, see what, you know, see what records they have to be able to, you know, resolve this issue of the boundary line dispute, because what the issue comes into play is if it's five feet in, but where you think your five feet is, is still on the other property owner's property, then we have a concern. So, you did send us an email in late September that gave us an update that you still haven't heard, because title companies are still really busy because of the Sandy issues. Is there anything else you want to offer at this point, otherwise?
Well, basically, it's still a backlog because of the super soft, still on Sandy.
Right.
However, a preliminary investigation has begun.
Oh, good, okay, that's positive at least.
And I did file a claim in New Jersey Banking Insurance Company.
Okay.
On the title insurance. However, they says the policy was written in New York State, they closed that. And they said that they would forward it to New York State Insurance and Banking Department.
Okay.
However, New York State never got it. So I had to open a new claim with New York State Banking and Department. However, I made contact with them, they are backlog also. I just got an email from them today checking on the status since I opened the claim in June. They, right now, are still working on the claims that were at March twentieth, so they're not even up to June yet.
Okay, so March, April, May, June, so we're-
So they're three months behind right now.
Okay.
And they can't tell me when, basically, that they will even assign someone to that claim to investigate the title insurance company and the-
Okay. So, so based on that recommendation, go ahead.
Well, what I have is some questions for the board.
Okay.
Last meeting, Mr. Davey stated that the issue has been going on for over five years. All right? And I guess my question is, where has his title insurance company been for the last five years? And, you know, how did the town allow four homes affected by this issue to be built without having the-
All right, you know what, we've covered this ground already, so-
Well, it was four houses that were built with this issue still being-
We understand that, and since then, he's, he's explained to this board that he's hired multiple surveyors, or his insurance company, his title insurance has hired multiple surveyors, and they've come up with different results than the result that you have, so-
That was my next question. He had stated last meeting, he had six surveyors. And, you know, who are they besides the last one, Beatty Watson? And why would you need six surveyors unless the first five are telling you what you don't want to hear? I mean, why would you need that many surveyors? And, you know, we submitted our survey, which is the survey approved by the town for the subdivision. You know, why is this board not standing behind the town's action for the approval of that survey? For that subdivision?
Aye.
And then, my last one is based, since Mr. Davey has made a claim against, you know, that proposed survey, why is the onus not on him to prove his claim that the town approved survey is not correct?
Okay. The property line is wherever the property line is. At this point, nobody can confirm where that line is. He's not asking to put something additional on property that might affect that property line, you are. So the onus is on you. This board, as we've explained to you before, this board cannot approve your appeal when the outcome of it might end up, that the shed that you're, garden shed that you're requesting, might end up being on his property, or less than the five feet. And then ultimately, if it is, if you still want, if we approved you for five feet, you might end up having to move it, and then, well then, why didn't it just go in that place in the first place? And you've explained about the line of sight and other issues that we've gone through before. So, the onus is on you, okay? It is your appeal, you have a right to withdraw the appeal, or change the location of your proposed shed, but the onus is on you. If you want to ask him for additional information, you're certainly welcome to, all right? But this board needs confirmation from you, we have to, we hear the comments from our neighbors, with concerns from neighbors, we must respond to those comments and concerns. Okay?
Then at this time, I guess I'd request an additional deferment on the application until, you know, if we want to go out, I mean, at this point now, with the weather getting bad, I'm going to be shut down as far as building anyway, so if we want to go out five, six months, that's fine.
Okay.
And hopefully by then, we'll have some kind of resolution from the title insurance company.
If you're saying that New York State is working on applications that are from March twentieth, so, and yours went in in June, so we're talking April, May, June, we're talking at least three months, so three months from now is at least the January meeting. But that's just initiating their review, so my suggestion probably would be March?
February or March.
I was going to ask the councilor.
At least February, yes.
At least February.
Okay, so I agree with the councilor.
Don't make it March, or April, at this point.
Well, it's up to you, I mean-
Let's do March, folks.
Yeah, I was going to say March.
If we get hit with snow and we get pushed back a meeting, we could have, let's go with March. All right? So do I, is there any, any other questions from board members? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this appeal? Mr. Davey?
Just to clarify the timing, this goes back more than two years ago.
Right.
When Mr. Meyer was contacting his title company, so it's not, just doesn't go back to, I think this began with this particular board back in March. So now we're extending the appeal up to-
March again.
March again, so that's a full year, which must be awfully expensive for the town to continue, you know, with these appeals. I know that there's costs involved in it, but let me, let me just, just read this to you, just to maybe put a period at the end of all this. And this is from Chicago, and I'll give you a copy of this. Chicago Title Insurance Claim three six 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 zero nine. This is from Derek Weiss, Chicago Title.
As of what date?
As, this was, actually, this was in my computer when I got home at the last meeting. And so it's Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand and thirteen. "Mr. Davey, in response to your email of July fourth, two thousand and thirteen, and your voicemail from this afternoon, I am writing to confirm that in connection with the above referenced claim, Chicago Title Insurance Company hired Beatty and Watson Surveying and Engineering PC to perform a survey of your property. The Beatty and Watson survey dated July twelfth, two thousand and ten, indicates that the location of your property's boundary line is consistent with the location of the boundary lines as shown on filed map number forty-two oh seven in the McAvery survey. According to Beatty and Watson, the boundary lines for your property are consistent with the boundary line shown on filed map number forty-two oh seven, however, there is an overlap at the back of your property along the northern boundary line. This overlap was apparently created during the survey of the abutting property to the north. According to Beatty and Watson, based on their research, you have superior title to the overlap area. The company agrees with the results of Beatty and Watson's survey, and the company does not have any information that would indicate that you do not have superior title to the overlap area. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you. Derek Weiss, Associate Claims Counsel, West Region Fidelity National Title Group, Omaha, Nebraska." And the contact information is in here. If there's any further questions from the town attorney, or you have any questions regarding my claim.
No, we appreciate it. If you could give that to the town clerk? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, that being said, I think there's a little clarification there. Again, his title company did hire his surveyor, not necessarily Mr. Davey. So, we do have, you know, we accept your request that we adjourn the meeting again. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no.
Go ahead.
Do you have any, any other comment, other than having it postponed till March of two thousand and fourteen?
That information was also given to the board. Some of my documents, but that's basically the same thing that he had given to one of the neighbors dated November nineteen two thousand and ten, and also there's another document that is not quite slightly-
All right, if you're going, we need you to come up to the microphone, so that it, there's a record of this.
There was a couple of documents that we had given to-
Right, the board documents.
The board. One, pretty much said the same thing, debated dated November nineteen two thousand and ten. And there was another one, which was this year, which he had given to you folks here, pretty much stating-
Again, as you heard, your neighbor has said that as of July of this year, that their insurance is saying that they have superior title or superior rights over the property. And that's new information, which the board did not have. So I was wondering if you have any comment towards it, or are you going to still go for the March?
Well, I had spoken to Beatty and Watson a while ago, and also to Robert Oswald, who did the survey for the subdivision, and asked them to get together and resolve, you know, the issue. And they both yesed me to death, but they done nothing. They just, you know, were staying right out of it, so.
Okay, so I guess at this point, I'd like to make a motion to move the, this appeal to March two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, third second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you in the spring. All right, item number two is a public hearing. Appeal three six four zero Stelter. Sean Stelter, nineteen Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a fifteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Is Mr. S- oh, you are here, okay. We have, this board has spent a couple of months reviewing the application, the appeal by Mr. Stelter. He is looking to put an in-ground pool on his property. He has several sink holes on his property that make the placement of the pool slightly difficult. The board has had multiple discussions with him about the fact that there is an opportunity to shrink that pool, the size of the pool, that still would allow him to be able to swim laps, as he, as he brought to our attention. But in it, he needs an additional variance because of the patio that he'd like associated around that pool. We discussed with him about some screening, because the location of the pool is going to be visible to the street. He was amenable to some screening. I don't think we locked into exactly what it would be. So, you know, again, the board did have multiple discussion with this, and we decided at the last meeting to hear from the neighbors if there were any additional concerns. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Okay, so is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal by Sean Stelter, nineteen Canterbury Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a fifteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close and reserve?
Some more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will, we're going to, we have to review your, where we stand in terms of the board's decision on this. So we have sixty-two days to issue a decision. Our hope is that, you know, we'll deal with this next month. Okay? You don't have to, you'll get a copy of the decision in the mail. Potentially. Again, our expectation would be, we generally deal with the decision at the next meeting. I can't say we always do, so, but, you know, it depends on whether the board feels we need to have consultation with our attorney or not. Okay? Item number three, appeal three six four six Kelly, Albert and Joanne Kelly, thirty-nine Shag Bark Lane, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Kelly's are here, okay. The board did review this. It came to our attention that the applicant did get a permit to be able to put their shed in, but actually moved the shed to a different location, because it, they felt it was a better location for it. Our building department, the deputy zoning administrator, actually agreed with it, with the location. The shed is very nicely landscaped, there's a stone wall in the front of it, and the board, you know, in its review, agreed to hear from any neighbors if they had any concerns with the location of the shed. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
No? Is there anyone here to speak for or against the request for a shed, a twelve-foot, twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed for Albert and Joanne Kelly, thirty-nine Shag Bark Lane? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some more.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And there is a resolution? Come on, Jim.
I don't know, everybody's beating to the punch here. "Referring to appeal number three six four six by Albert and Joanne Kelly, requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing twelve by eighteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Set property being located at thirty Shag Bark Lane, Hopewell Junction, and whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for the twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing twelve by eighteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under CECL, and no further action is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals has held its public meeting to today's date, October eighth, two thousand and thirteen, and the zoning board of appeals finds that, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community. Desire resolved cannot be achieved by some other means, because the location of the shed is in a now visually pleasing and shielded by trees. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved, that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Albert and Joanne Kelly, thirty-nine Shag Bark Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for the existing twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. And be it further resolved, that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner."
Sir, second? Second. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, all right? So what you, now, at this point now, you go back to the building department, and you can close out your permit? To the building department. Okay? Have a good evening. And just a couple. All right, item number four, appeal three six four eight Mustakis. George Mustakis of East Fish Creek Provisions is requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by forty-foot storage container to be located on the western side of his building at five sixty-seven Old Hopewell Road, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Okay. The Hopewell Junction's in the wrong place, sorry. Sorry for the pause there. Yeah, pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen of the zoning ordinance. You see my confusion, never mind.
Skip over it.
We're just going to move that to the right place there. Okay. So, we had, we, the zoning board reviewed this application at our last meeting. The only question that really came up, we understand that the use of this is really going to be to be able to store emergency generators, because East Fish Creek Provisions provides a lot of meals when there is power outages for the utility companies. So, you know, it really is a community benefit for them to be able to get up and running again, and to be able to provide meals for the folks who have worked so hard to get power back and restored to town. You also are going to be looking to store some catering equipment in there, and so there will be a functional use of this. But the, what we talked about was whether or not the planning board actually had any purview over this application, because you are affecting the site plan. And the, it was reviewed that the planning board, yes, does have to do a minor review of this, okay? And so the planning board, the application has been filed, the planning board is expected to do their review at the meeting on October fifteenth. So they're actually going to see it next week, which means after we get comment tonight, we are going to adjourn this until our meeting on November twelfth, and then we'll be able to wrap it up at that point. However, one of the things I noticed on your application to the planning board is you did not provide, one of the things we talked about was screening, whether you could put some bushes or something in front of this. I mean, I didn't notice any landscaping on that plan, so-
There is some existing already.
I know, there, you have a bunch, you have a bunch of big green ever, green trees, I did go buy it again, just, but, but-
We can, I'm sure we can do something.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that we talked about what color can, the container was going to be, do you know what color?
We'll paint it, well, not paint it, we'll make it the same as the structure, which is up around.
Okay, because you did have a green fence, the slats and the chain link fence back there.
Yeah, well, the face will go look like the building.
Okay.
It's like colored, the colored scheme.
But again, if, if we could just make sense to put a couple bushes in the front there.
And, I'd also like-
Excuse me, can you just come to the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
You should open the public hearing some more.
Who gets it? One second, that's okay, we'll do that. Go ahead.
With that, I would also like to say some details about the ventilation. I don't think there's anything on here, just as far as if you're running the generator inside, just, you know, for safety reasons.
They'll be, I'm sure they'll be returning it, to return it. As soon as we get the unit, then I'll have a little bit of better idea on the specs of everything. There is a muffler of, so.
And we did talk about the fact that it's going to have a second door, so that there won't be alternates out of there. All right, I do need to open the public hearing, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Some more.
Second. Second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Yeah, I mean, it's fine that we have the discussion with the applicant, that's certainly not a problem, so. All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
Again, as was mentioned about the evergreens, yes, in four, five years, the evergreens are going to become large enough to cover it, but for the next several years, you need to have some kind of foliage or something, some bushes or some shrubbery to protect-
That's not a non-vision.
Okay, great.
And again, not tall enough that they affect the utility wires, right? All right, but it must be reviewed by the planning board. Okay, is there anyone here to speak for or against the application of East Fish Creek Provisions requesting a three-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by forty-foot storage container to be located on the western side of the building at five sixty-seven Old Hopewell Road, Hopewell Junction, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use? Well, the facility, the, the use of the building is a pre-existing non-conforming use. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn to the November twelfth meeting?
Well, I mean, I, I hope it's just pro forma, you know, the stockists have run a good business at that location, and also the other location, right by the police station, obviously being good neighbors, you know, they can't make the container any more narrow, so.
Right.
And that's, they have to put it at that location for access to utilities and stuff, so. I just understand that it has to be reviewed, and I hope it gets a quick review and approval.
I appreciate that.
So is that a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Do you have that?
I thought he was doing that. I'll make the motion to adjourn the public hearing, too, yes.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we, you'll go to the planning board next Tuesday, and then we'll see you next month.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. All right, our public hearings for the evening are complete. So we're going to go on to reviews. The first review, appeal three six four seven Sama, Dr. Michael Sama, fifteen North Winter Park Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a two-foot rear line variance for an existing detached pool house, a eleven-foot sideline variance for a barbecue station, a forty-three-foot rear line and ten-foot sideline variance for an existing swing set, and a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot retaining wall pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven, and one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Michael. This is the first time this board is seeing this application, and there are multiple things going on on this property.
There are. Do you have a copy of this, middle of the map in front of you, to kind of see the overall layout of, of the site? Uh, this is, the parcel's located over in Tecanicox, formerly fifteen Winter Park Drive. Dr. Sama is with us tonight. What we have here is we have a condition where there were a number of structures and so forth that were installed, unfortunately, without the benefit of building permit. So we are here to clean that up. This all came about based upon, as understood, a generator that was installed. And effectively, an electrical inspection was done, that got kicked back to the town. Building, the building department found out about it, I guess there was also an open pool permit, there was a building permit for that. And a long story short, on inspection by the town, there were a number of other things that were found out there. So, there's probably a few things that are considered here relative to the structures that were built. There was a gazebo that was installed, there was an enlargement of an existing rear deck. There was a, a pool house, effectively, that was, that was constructed. A barbecue station, and I have some photos here, which at least you guys can kind of move around yourself, if you'd like, take a look at. And largely, too, probably the, the largest one of the variances that are being sought is the swing set. And I think at the end of the day, because of the temporary nature of the swing set, although that's substantial, when you see the pictures of the site, you'll see there really is not a whole lot of flexibility in terms of where it can go, especially the way the site is set up right now. And again, it being a swing set, certainly in that particular case, wouldn't think that a building permit would be needed, but there are certain regulations and requirements relative to where you place your swing set, things such as that. So, the long and short of it is, is we did, we went out there, our office went out, we did as-builts of the structures that are out there. On September sixteenth, we actually did formally submit building permit applications, and this is just for your knowledge, of a number of structures out there, including the gazebo, the pool house, and the deck extension, okay?
Okay.
The barbecue station, and I guess we can talk about these point by point. It was based upon a definition of structure. They indicated that that barbecue station was in fact a structure.
Yeah.
And in the heat of a, of an area. So, again, it's not a shed, it's not a pool house, and so forth. But, you know, there's, there's enough to it where, where it was felt the need that that- enough to it where it was felt the need that that, that a permit, or at least a variance was gonna be required for that particular structure. Now, in terms of a building permit, we didn't submit a building permit for that, 'cause there's nothing that defines what's there as building permit, but again, defined as a structure. So what we tried to do is go through each one of these methodically, determine how many variances we need. Now, the gazebo, that was installed, even though it was installed without the benefit of the permit, is in conformance with the sideline yards. So, you know, we're here, there are things that were installed...
Right, right.
...that are within a setback, some that were not. So we're here for a number of area variances relative to the things that were installed, not conformance with setbacks relative to the side yard yards.
Mike, what is the visibility of all of these structures related to the neighbors? The impact on the neighbors? Because this is a fairly new subdivision, there's not a lot of growth back there, okay? So that's one... And again, the structures, I recognize that the structures have been there, but I'm just curious, is the, like, the visibility of the swing set? Swing sets, and I've talked to Dr. Sama as well, swing sets could have yellow slides, blue sides, green slides, they could have roofs to the top of them that are multiple colors. Is there, you know, I mean, what's the visibility of these, impact on the neighbors?
Well, when I think about, we'll talk about quickly the side yards, because what happened to the side neighbors, rather, because they're right there. These are effectively one plus or minus acre lots, maybe a little bit bigger, but in our one acre zone. So you have basically lots that run right along each other.
Right.
I do know that on the, let's call it lot number twenty-seven on the map that you're looking at, neighbor, I guess effectively to the south, or southeast, southwest, rather, there is a line of trees and so forth, evergreens and so forth, that were installed on that side. Don't recall on the other side, Doctor.
I can describe it.
Yeah, why don't you do that, because I think, I have some photos, too, while he's kinda describing it, that may help.
So, I, the question specifically that you asked was from, is about the swing set in the back.
Correct, that's the one, again, like Mike said, has, needs the biggest variance, so it's the closest to your neighbor's property, really, what is your neighbor seeing?
So, if you, if you're familiar with the, those rainbow sets, it's a large sort of redwood and cedar combination set I put in, we moved in that, into that house eleven years ago.
Okay.
I cleared most of the, there was just some remaining weeds, more or less in the backyard, just some scrap that I cleared out of there and put that in when my, I guess my twelve-year-old was a baby. There are grown-up on either side of the fence that we put in a few years afterwards, basically the weeds from our neighbor's yards obscure most of the view, along with some of the existing trees that weren't cleared on the neighbor's side, and in addition to that, we put a line of evergreens on either side. Can you see it from there? You could see the top of the cedar, it's a dark reddish structure, so you can see it not nearly as dramatically as you can see the rest of the backyard, but you can see it somewhat from the neighbor's sightline. Since their kids have played on it, I assume they don't have too much of an issue with it.
Okay.
But it is visible. I'm not gonna tell you you can't see it, it's just, I didn't get anything with a bunch of weird rainbow colors and a yellow roof like you described.
The fact that you already say that there is some screening there, vegetation, that's very, very helpful, okay?
Yeah, and it's grown up over the eleven years it's been there.
Sure, that's fine, I appreciate that, thank you. Mike, the pictures that you've given us, are these for our file, for our records?
If you'd like.
Please?
What I wanna do.
I mean, if you wanna bring them back next month at the public hearing, so that they're...
It'd be bad, 'cause I have, we went out there and actually measured the structures themselves, and when we do as-builts...
That's fine.
Take photos, keep them up to the structures we have in our record and help perform reconstruction of them. So, those are from my file, but I can certainly bring you those.
And I would expect, again, if any neighbors do come out, they're gonna wanna see what some of these look like, if they're not already familiar with them.
Right, and some of the things we can do, too, for the next step on this at a public hearing, is we'll go out there and actually take some photos from neighboring properties we've had, that might be helpful purposes of the hearing.
And visibility from the road, which I don't think actually, I don't think any of this is gonna be visible from the road?
If you can tell, by, yeah, by the lot, it literally comes and jumps right off the edge of the road, and you almost have, well, you're at three-ten at the road and you're at three, almost three-seventy at the top of the hill, so there's almost a fifty to sixty-foot difference in elevation between the road, the house sits up top...
Right.
And then it kinda drops off in the back, so none of this particularly can be seen from the road.
But like, in the pictures that you've given us, I can actually see the neighbor's house from the backyard here, so there's, you know, so some of, there's, clearly this is visible to the neighbor.
I didn't see any pictures of the swing set.
You missed it. It was in the one corner.
In one corner?
Yeah. No bright colors. I think so. Well, I identified something of the swing set, maybe I was wrong.
As you mentioned, those are really, those are for our benefit, for reconstruction of the plans for the grill, for the gazebo, for the deck, for the pool house. So if it's not in there, I didn't mean to indicate that that wasn't there, but we can certainly bring photos of that.
There was one corner, I mean, there was a swing set I could see.
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, so I guess we would need that, because that's the closest I could, yeah, I saw that also, but...
Is this it?
That should be the corner.
I don't think it's the whole thing.
That's, yeah, that's where it's going.
Maybe this corner, this...
He just made me feel better.
You have better eyes than the rest of us, that's all.
I didn't see it when I was expecting a full, full picture of it.
And you deserve a full picture. So I'll have it for you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm gonna comment, you've done a beautiful job in this yard. I mean, the things that you've put in there are just gorgeous, so it's clear that you respect your property and you, you know, you've certainly taken good care of it, so I give you full marks for that. Unfortunately, you did it without building permits, so, you know, but again, the fact that we're dealing with that now, let's resolve this and, you know, let's get it taken care of. Anything else you need to bring to our attention?
I'm just curious, and look at the pictures, I mean, the survey shows segmented retaining wall. I think of that as the blocks you put together, this looks like a monolith wall, it's all one stuccoed or something?
Yeah, what happens is, is the motif of the whole backyard is kind of stucco and so forth, so my understanding, concrete block, I understand.
Then I can describe it if you like.
No, we have pictures, so we can...
Pictures, I just...
And then stucco to match the exterior and the colors, to match, you know, to match the exterior of the whole experience in the backyard.
Was that what the initial design thing was, though, was individual block, or they cemented in place, or they...
They're concrete block, there's a...
Concrete block.
There's rebar in it, and there's concrete block on that, and then there's concrete inside.
Is it designed by an engineer?
My father, I don't think so.
It's not gonna move, in other words.
It was overdesigned.
That's what I say about me.
My, and my, and my...
As part of this, too, we have to provide clarification to the building department relative to the wall and so forth.
Yes.
We're gonna be doing enough investigation to, so we're comfortable enough to know that what's out there is...
Well, you wanna make, the building department's gonna wanna make sure it's not gonna collapse. Barbara is asking the question, when were these structures all built? You explained that the swing set was probably put in about twelve years ago.
So the swing set was put in, in, that would be the spring of two thousand and three. The rest of this was begun, the hole was dug for the pool in October of two thousand and nine. Then the rest of it was constructed between April of two thousand and ten and the summer of two thousand and eleven, and that's when we got water in the pool and started using the patio area in the summer of two thousand and eleven. So it's been the summer of two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen now that we've really been in the backyard. Some of the, some of the additional, for example, I finished all of the stucco and the stonework myself earlier in the spring, so it was not all done in exactly April of one year. It was really a labor of love over several years.
The swings, and you said your daughter's...
The swings, my kids don't even go on them anymore. They're sitting in the back corner of the lot, we don't, they don't even use it, they wanna be in the pool and hanging out there.
Which does beg the question, do we need the variance, or can you, it doesn't make sense at this point to remove them?
Honestly, if that's, if that's the big deal, and the big thing is the swing set, I don't use it that much. I did spend twelve thousand dollars, 'cause it's two rainbow pool sets that I had joined together by, they have a bridge unit that goes, that attaches to when you buy it, that was the big deal in my backyard for the first seven years that we were there, it was all I could afford. And then as I accumulated some money and some time, I was able to build the rest of it.
I think our concern is that, once we, this board grants a variance, it stays for the life of the property, in essence. And so you might not have a use of it in, for very much longer with your children, but the next owner of the property has the ability to replace that set that's there in that same location, and maybe then it might have a yellow roof and a yellow swing and a, you know, so that's, I think, what we're a little bit more concerned about. If we don't have to give that variance, but still deal with the rest of the stuff on your property, it certainly makes, you know, our decision a lot easier that, you know, the, probably the most egregious violation, for lack of a better word, okay, is something that probably, there's less use of it at this point for it. So, John, I guess question for you is, as our attorney, once before we dealt with a swing set, and we actually granted a life to that variance, recognizing that the children hit a certain age and they just don't use it anymore?
As a matter of fact, the town or the state of New York encourages conditions to be placed on variances, such as the one that was described by the chairperson.
So, I think on that one, I think we gave it two years, and then I think they had to revisit. Like, we can check that between now and then, but would you mind, I mean...
I don't mind a conditional variance in any way, no.
If we say, come back in two, we'll give it two years, and then you come back again, and let's see if we need to renew it at that point? And then it just doesn't stay there forever?
I understand, and it's nice firewood. So it's fine, it's just expensive.
Not that you're gonna burn it outside, of course.
Twelve thousand firewood, yeah.
Yeah, it's really expensive firewood, I don't recommend anybody does that. If you want firewood, I know some people who can get it cheaper, so, yeah.
There's always Craigslist.
Yes, absolutely.
I have a question regarding the rear of the property.
Sure.
Is there, do you, does your property, it looks like it abuts to another piece of property, and is there a buffer there?
There is, there's several very, first, first, there's about thirty feet or so between the back of that wall and the property line, and there's my, there's my fence that we put up, there's a perimeter fence that we put, a combination of aluminum and wrought iron, on the, on our side of that, there's an old farm wall at the back. And then on the, on the far side of the farm wall, actually growing into it, are two very large trees, there's a huge sugar maple tree and a very large sycamore that's right next to it, as well as some other smaller locust trees and some cherries that are there. So, in any case, there's a very natural buffer. You can't see my neighbor's house from my backyard.
From the back, okay.
It's, and they can't see us, except of course, when the leaves fall off in the wintertime and...
And the pool is closed.
And the pool is closed, right.
But even in terms of the noise associated with children at play...
Right.
During the summer months when they're there, the buffer...
Really can't hear, my neighbor has a basketball net there and they play, and I know they're children, and we can hear them when they're playing basketball, you hear the bouncing ball, but you can't see it.
Okay.
And ditto, when our kids are in the pool, I know those people very well, and you really don't see much. You don't see anything, you just hear them.
Yeah, I think it's also because of the elevation.
And the elevation, they're also, they're, you know, when we're on my back deck, I'm looking at their roof, because it starts to slow down.
Any other questions from board members?
I think it'd be helpful if you can get some pictures of your neighboring area, because I think that will definitely help.
Oh, sure, I'd be glad to make, we have video, too, and so, I love my backyard, yeah, I'd be glad to bring pictures from every angle, if you like.
Day in the life of a backyard.
Again, the swing set issue is there, but again, you'll have to sort of give us some options for the swing set, because that's the one that is closest to the boundary lines.
Or, again, we visit the condition of giving it a two-year limit.
Yeah, correct, again, you may have options, because you have a month to think about it, and so either, if you have some suggestions of what you'd prefer, you know, whether, you know, you wanna take it down, remove it, move it to a different location, have conditional variances and things like that, so you have the choices.
I think when we supplement the photos from specific spots, if you need to see whether it's looking through into the property or throughout the property, you'll see based upon everything that's out there. Maybe there's a little bit of an option to move, but again, in the back of the center, whether it's worth to move or to, you know, cut it out.
Taking it apart is as good as, basically it goes away at that point, once you start taking it apart, although it does easily unbolt. It's a very large, substantial playset, and what would be the point of me spending a lot of time, you know, disassembling it, only to reassemble it, to disassemble it two years after that, when the kids never go on it?
Right.
So, I, I think, once you see the pictures of it, you'll see that it's, it's pretty well secluded in the back corner there, but I'd be more than amenable to a conditional variance and take it out in a couple of years. I have a set, my seven-year-old's the youngest one, and he's just about done with swings at this point.
Yeah, he might have a couple more years.
Once he had an iPod, that was the end of the swings.
Alright, any other questions from board members? If not, do I have a motion to go for public hearing for...
Motion to advertise?
Second?
Take a motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, please see Pam, she'll give you your instructions for getting a signage. And Mike, you want your pictures back? Pam, can we have that, send the pictures?
And just make sure that you use a permanent marker, so it doesn't wash away in the rain.
Your, on the sign, please.
On the sign itself.
Ashley, Mike, look, probably.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
I'll do that.
Oh, yeah, these were, Pam, you want these back for the file?
Yes, please, those are mine.
Alright, we'll see you next month. Okay, item number six, Appeal 3649 Need Pools for Lyons. Need Pools, representing John Lyons, is requesting a two-foot sideline variance for an existing patio around an existing in-ground pool at five West Barrett Hill Road, Hopewell Junction, pursuant to section one ninety-four point nine-three of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Alright, again, this is the first time we're seeing this application, so I'm gonna ask you to take us through it. What are you requesting, and...
Well, basically, we have the existing patio, which is in there, it's within two feet of the setback on the house side. As the property line falls away, it does go within the setback, or stays without the setback.
You did get an application to put in a pool.
Correct.
The pool is fine, but the issue came up that when you actually installed, or somebody installed the patio, and the town went out to inspect, the building department went out to inspect, they determined it actually ended up, the patio ended up being a little too close to the...
Yeah, one corner of the patio is within the required...
To the setback, okay.
It's about twenty square feet total. It's a little triangular piece on the lower side. I do have another drawing that might show it a little bit better, I don't know if you wanna see that.
Well, the survey's pretty clear here, so...
Okay.
Alright, so again, this, in this case, this pool was, got the permit, was put in properly, unfortunately, it's the patio that ended up, you know...
Yeah, we had a little mistake.
And how wide is the patio itself?
How wide?
How wide? I mean, it's a brick patio, can you take those, the two feet of bricks in, or then it really doesn't leave a patio, it leaves six inches?
It is wide, I mean, it's probably ten feet wide, but it is, it's just the way it lines up on the edges there, then you'd have like a jog in it. And the area is heavily screened, I understand some of the concerns, Mary was telling me Um, I understand some of the concerns, uh, Mary was telling me some of the concerns with why the setback is there. So I don't know if that would help as well. I mean, ideally, we'd like to be able to leave it there for aesthetic purposes and for use. Since it is such a small section. The pool, I mean, obviously, if we could've slid the pool over further, we could've, but due to the slope and the, uh, actually hit a lot of bedrock.
How, how big is the actual pool?
Eighteen by thirty-six.
Okay, so it's a reasonably sized pool, it's not?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we could've shifted over more, but we hit bedrock and we were digging, so.
Questions or comments from board members?
No. It really is a minimal.
Right, and it's the patio, not the pool, so.
Yep.
Okay, motion to advertise.
Second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, Pam will give you the instructions for your sign and we'll see you next month.
Okay, great.
Please make sure to bring some pictures so we have a better picture of what's going on up there. Just make photographs of the, of the
Can I show you this? Would you just want copies of this, maybe?
Well, you just bring it.
Part, partly again, remember that your neigh, the neighbors are coming and so the neighbors might want to see what it is that you were actually approving.
Take a couple of pictures from different sides.
Please, right. Thank you. All right, item number seven, appeal three, six, five, zero, Cornet. Wade and Gretchen Cornet, twenty-five Elk Road, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a sixteen-foot sideline variance for a proposed staircase for egress from a second-floor bedroom pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
All right. My understanding is that you had previous approval for an accessory apartment in this home?
Correct.
Okay, and, so is, is it, are we talking about this egress for that accessory apartment?
For the room that's above the accessory apartment.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay. Is it a second story or a third story? It's a second floor?
Second story, yeah.
Oh, so your apartment's down below?
In the creation of the accessory apartment, the accessory apartment took up the first floor,
Right.
which created a, a large bedroom above it on the second floor.
Okay.
Um, so, at this time, now that the kids are all being moved out, we're thinking of moving up to make it a, a large, like, master bedroom suite upstairs.
Okay.
And we would like to have a little balcony outside of it. It would be nice to have a set of stairs to come down.
Okay.
Um, do you have drawings in front of you at all?
Yeah.
It's a little different. Last time I was here, ten years ago, we sat across from a table.
Yeah, that's a little table there, yeah.
Could pass pictures. So I'm a little unprepared. So there's an existing patio on the accessory apartment on the side of the house. Um, if you could see that on the, on the, um, on the map there, drawn in.
All right, proposed addition, existing patio, okay?
Okay, so the existing deck down below for entrance into the accessory apartment. So basically, the platform on the second story would be the same width plus an additional three feet to allow for stairs to come down, which would come down alongside the existing patio on the first floor. Follow me?
I do follow you. I'm just questioning, who's gonna really use those stairs?
Well, it might not be used all that often, but it's from that bedroom, the only other escape is the center of the house, so.
So you're looking at it from a safety perspective?
It's a good idea.
Okay. What's the material that these stairs are gonna be made out of?
Prestreated lumber. That would match what's existing down below.
Stained or unstained?
Probably stained, but it won't be stained depending on how quickly this all goes through, for at least three months after it's built.
Yeah, you have to wait for it to dry out.
Yeah.
If for emergency purposes, I don't know if it makes sense.
I'm sorry?
Why, can't you, perhaps go off the back or something? I don't know, and not go out so far? Would it make a difference? I mean,
No, actually,
you go back, you get closer to the property line.
Going back to the back way actually becomes closer to the property line and as far as from coming home, um, the driveways in the front, it wouldn't really make a lot of sense to walk all around the back of the house to come up the stairs.
Again, this is just for emergencies, so. You're not gonna be going up and down these stairs.
That doesn't mean that we wouldn't use it.
Well.
I, I guess one of the things we have to be concerned about is by adding a second set of steps to a bedroom, it provides the opportunity for you to have another accessory apartment. And so that's what we have to be concerned, that our approving this variance is not allowing that to happen.
Right.
We don't wanna make it so convenient that you can start renting that room out, okay? And so I think we're looking for the assurance, some assurance from you that that's really not at all your intention, that it's some other purpose here.
Right, no, no, that's not our intention, so I can't give you any other insurance than that.
Was worried about the aesthetics. I mean, the application indicates that it's gonna match the existing house and stuff, but I wonder about the aesthetics, looking from the road.
Looking from the road, it won't even be visible. I could show you, like I said, I'm not really, I'm not seeing across from one another. Um, the only visibility would be from one neighbor on the side.
Right.
From the front, from the road, it wouldn't even be
Were you trees in there?
Three others, trees.
How close?
There, with me one second.
Where's the neighbor's house?
Neighbor's house could be where it says lot number sixteen.
But is the house close to the park?
All the houses in, in development are close.
Do you have a pool in your backyard?
No.
Do you have a trampoline? Or did you have a trampoline?
Did.
Did, okay. There's a, when you go to, and take an aerial from
Google.
Google or Maps Live or some of the different sites, being maps, it, it's a point in time. So at some point, the, the, the aerial that's on file and in the system shows that your trampoline, so.
Yeah.
And it looks, and that looks awfully close to the property line, so that's why if it was a pool, we were gonna have to
That's, that's the whole
address some other concern there.
Do you have a fence? Is there a fence between your properties?
Yes, there is a fence.
So you, so you have a fence that blocks off your backyard?
Um, well, split rail fence in the back, along the back of the property line.
Okay.
Along the side property line, which is the side that I'm proposing the stairs on. I don't have a fence. My neighbor has just a regular, uh, metal mesh fence.
Okay, all right. It's the pleasure of the word. Wanna hear out the neighbors and see?
And I would like to, I guess, maybe see some, do you have plans or anything indicating, is there any?
Not having much luck with my picture.
I'd like to have a better idea of what this is going to look like, just looking at your survey.
Like an elevation drawing, Jim?
I mean, we have, yeah, we have this. Okay. Okay, I wanted to go home anyway. What is the distance, top to bottom? Do you know?
Uh, approximately, um, on second floor. Depending on exactly where it's gonna land, it could be anywhere from ten to twelve feet.
These are just plans that you drew?
That's correct.
I wonder if, uh, you're gonna be allowed to make a, uh, run of stairs like that for that length.
Right, without a platform at some point, right.
I think you might have to have a landing in between.
Uh,
I don't think that, that's gonna be the code, but.
I don't know. I, I've built them before. I, I worked for Toll Brothers and we have a number of those stairs built that way. And they're inspected by the town. But, you know, I'm open.
Well, that's what I wanna
How wide are these stairs?
Three foot.
Only three feet, okay, so it's not
Well, I mean, I think if it's
You can't make them skinnier, is what I'm saying, in terms of decreasing the variance, so.
Well, no, that, well, that's not my concern. I'm, I'm have an idea, concern as to what the aesthetics are gonna be from looking at it from the side or whatever, you know, with the existing deck, maybe not. But how much this is gonna protrude? And I think if you have a twelve-foot height and you're coming down, what the town requires, I don't know. My understanding of the code is that you're gonna need a landing in between. They don't want such a long run.
Well, second story would be about nine foot from the first story.
Mm-huh.
So the platform is gonna be a step down out of the house.
Well, I don't know how far you're down, you know, you got nine feet.
And the ground is, right, foundation.
But to the ground, you have, you have probably a foot for your floor, the first floor. At least eight feet between that and another foot for the, the floor framing for the second floor, so that's, that's ten feet, but I don't know if, gotta probably be another foot below the framing for your foundation so that there's room between the wood and the ground for termite protection and stuff. I'm just going by what you said, it's ten to twelve feet, so.
But do you want that?
I would like to have a better idea of what we're gonna approve for approving this, as to what exactly you're gonna be building and whether that would be required or not.
But Jim, did the building department send you to the zoning board? Who's, why are you here?
Yes.
Okay, so the building department has already reviewed what you were looking to do?
Yes, they sent me through.
The zoning board office to file an appeal?
Yes.
Have they, have they otherwise okayed your plans, though?
Yeah, did they have it, when you went, when you brought the plans into them, did they have any concern with the straight run of the stairs?
Because they said the first step is to get the variance, the second step is to get the building.
Did they, did they look at your, what you were proposing to do? Cause it is, you probably went, you probably went to the building department to go get a permit, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So you had the, this information to be able for them to look at?
Yes, but they were really just concerned about the variance.
Okay, but did they look at this to begin with?
There was one woman who wasn't there that day, which is the reason I believe I came onto your office.
Okay.
Right, that would be Mary.
That's why it's helpful to have Mary here.
Yeah.
She wasn't there, um, so this nice lady over here, tonight, to here
Pam.
helped me very much, um.
Okay.
And that's as far as we got.
Well, you're gonna have to do whatever the planning board, I mean, whatever the building department actually requires, yes.
Suicide.
Oh, okay, that's helpful.
The door, you replaced the window. Platform would be, platform would be approximately a little bit over.
How tall is your fence? Is that four feet or six feet?
Five feet.
Five feet, okay.
Yes, so the plat-
So that's five feet. You're gonna at least double that.
The plat, well, actually, the floor, though, for the, for this bedroom is down here.
Okay.
So, there's a view from the front, so it really wouldn't be seen. There's, there's the, the landing going into the side house, the accessory apartment, so this, this would go up and over.
It's gonna be over that?
No, the stairs would go up on the side.
Or it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be up to the side of that.
Right. There is a possibility. It's, it's hard to tell without building a platform that the steps could come down on the existing platform.
Which may remove the need, right, how much?
But until it's exactly
Let, let the other members see this picture so they can, uh, see the side of the house already?
Mm-huh.
That would be the front view.
Did you see it outside?
Yeah.
That's the side.
Mm-huh. So there's a, this is a deck already here?
No, that's a fence. This is, this is the platform to the downstairs accessory apartment.
How big was the platform up, up top?
Approximately four foot seven by
It's gotta get out over that, that, out, out over the platform down below.
Well, I, I anticipate, I anticipate to make the platform the same size as the downstairs platform
Okay.
and then three foot out on the side
For the stairs.
where the stairs would come along the side of the top platform, which is the back, you'd walk over.
Okay. So, sorry, four foot seven by?
Four foot seven by, I think, nine.
So, then, and the nine feet runs along the
Front.
Along the
Front to back of your house, okay.
Which is the same.
So it's only four foot seven out, and then that's, and, and then the stairs start.
The floor, all the taxi people are, the platform is right up there.
It's like frozen. There we go.
And even the front, it should be barely, you know, wintertime, you'd see a couple, that tree blocks it.
And so, and, and
Dead end, so there's nobody else.
And so you're, to your neighbor to your side, there's, they have a fence, or is that your fence in the back?
This fence goes, that goes side to side.
That's your fence in the back? Okay. But only, only from their back, or does it go?
Right, from their back.
Okay. We're on, well, actually, I can look, I can look at the aerial. I was gonna say, where is their house? Are they gonna be looking at these stairs?
Yes, they will. And we had a talk with him in person and he doesn't have an issue with it.
Will you give us, give us a letter to that effect?
Or comes, or comes in here?
Or coming yourself?
I don't think they'll be able to make it, but I don't think they'll have a probable letter.
All right. Any other questions from board members? You wanna hear it out, to hear the neighbors and?
Yeah, I guess we have to, yeah.
Do we want screening? I'm not sure what you're, what you're Well. Is it, it's not gonna come out in the front, beyond the front of the house?
No.
Okay. And could the stairs be directed to the back? Well, if you go to the back, you've got a variance, that's the issue.
Even closer to the property line. Plus, there's a sidewalk that goes around to the back, so that wouldn't work out well.
And it wouldn't, you couldn't do it where the existing patio is, where the addition's got like a, actually in the backyard? Not just around the back, like
Well, you, you, your thing shows an addition, that's already on there, right? You're not, the only thing you're putting on is this
Stairs.
Stairs at the side.
Oh, so the addition.
That's just from the three, uh, prior application.
Okay. Motion advertised?
That's one.
Let's hear from the neighbors?
Yep. That was a motion I seconded.
I, I, yes, I made the motion, second. On paper?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign and then we'll see you next month.
Great, thank you.
Okay? Item number eight, appeal three, six, five, one, Signa. Salvatore Signa, sixty-six Saddle Ridge Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a nineteen-foot sideline variance for an existing eleven-hundred-square-foot sport court and a two-hundred-forty-foot, square-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so my understanding is that a couple of years ago, you installed a, well, let's start. Your house apparently is on an angle on your property. And so your understanding was that your backyard in your lot actually went back diagonally as opposed to the straightaway that apparently it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so a couple of years ago, you, you have several boys, is my understanding, and a couple of years ago, you installed a, um,
Right, and it's a rectangular, we have the map there. It's a rectangular po, property. So basically, I took measurements and I said, okay, I wanna, I want a sports court for my kids down there.
Right.
Way, 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 way beyond the house, right?
Yep.
And we, we put this sports court there to be parallel with the house, right? And, and try not to, and with the intention of not violating the adjacent, the adjacent, uh, lots, right?
Right.
And of course, it's a big rectangle and it's all trees, so it's a perfect, you know, it's perfect privacy. These trees are going all the way down to the marshlands.
Mm-huh.
And, uh, and then, then when I, then, then I was told, I was, you know, that, uh, the sports court, right, and, and so I said, oh, you needed, you needed a, uh, permit for a sports court? I know for a pool, I know for an annexation to my house. I did it, but I didn't, I didn't know for the sports court. So, how do we rectify it? The, uh, we came to the engineer, the chief engineer, is it Bryant? What's his name, the chief engineer?
Scott Bryant, mm-hmm.
Is it Bryant?
Scott Bryant, yes.
Scott Bryant. So I sat down with Mary and Scott Bryant and he said to me, doc, don't worry about it. This happens, there's an easy solution. This happens. He says, go to your, go to your next-door neighbor, the pettices,
Right.
and do a lot line adjustment, all the way in the back, all the way in the back. And it's really, it's in the marshland almost, you know?
Right.
And, uh, and, and behind, you know, back where in the, in marshlands, you'll, you'll do a lot line adjustment. So you give him, you give him some of your property,
Right.
right? And so he stays even and used to keep your same type of, of acres.
Okay.
So then I had Don, Don, Don Miller, drew, drew the survey, right?
Okay.
Drew the survey, and, uh, and now we just need your approval on that.
Okay, are you actually before the planning board at this point for that lot line realignment?
From what I understand, the pla, the, the planning board, one of, one member is like two, two, or three, three, three doors away from me.
Yes.
Uh, they, they put it through. They said it was totally fine by them. Now they just wanted to get your approval. This is what I've been told.
Okay, let, let's, let's, the clerk is also the clerk for the planning board, so let's just double check what, where we go from here.
Okay, that's what I've been told.
Is this, is, does this require a lot line realignment with the planning board? And so
He went to one meeting for the planning board, they sent him to the zoning board.
Okay, that's good. So far, so good.
And he still has to go back to the planning board.
And it's, okay, are they, is the planning board doing a coordinated review? Are they, did they circulate the lead agency?
No.
Okay, um, so we, John, we do our own review here?
Yeah, we do. It should be coordinated review, if there's two applications before two boards.
Right.
But they might handle it the way we talked about the early application we had earlier tonight. Maybe they'll do a little letter, minor amendment type of thing.
Okay, so the fact that they referred him to us without doing a coordinated review, we have to assume that that's
Right.
what they're gonna do. Okay. All right, so you're under, so All right, so you're under, so even though with this lot line realignment, you're, you're giving some of your property to your neighbor, and your neighbor's giving in exchange, is giving you some property somewhere, somewhere.
Right, so we come away with the same acreage, we come away with the same acreage.
Okay.
And it's in, it's in that marshland where it doesn't affect anybody, which is good.
Okay, but it appears that you have, your fence still encroaches on their property, is that...
Did, so did, I, I believe now, because I believe Don Miller told me this, but I can't tell you for sure. The, uh, the fence on the left side, because, you know, we have a pool there, so we have to, we have to...
Closer to the house, right.
But we have to, but the, the sports court, the sports court and the sides of the home, you know, it's completely enclosed.
Right.
Completely enclosed, right, per, per code. But what, but this, the fence on the left side, maybe there's a joint, let's say, let's say it's a thirty, thirty foot, thirty foot span. The fence now has to be, from what I understand, moved a little bit, like five feet here.
Okay, so you are going to move that fence in?
We have to.
Okay, all right, I, I'm just making sure.
But he didn't, he didn't want to, so Mid Hudson Fencing won't do that until it's approved by you.
Until you've been approved. Got it. Wait, you're not, right, I, you're not supposed to change the conditions at your house until, while a board is reviewing it.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so, so I agree, they shouldn't be doing, I just want to make sure that we don't have to deal with that fence as well. You're going to actually move that, that, that's good, that's right.
Right, and that fence has to be up, then the inspector will come, right, to make sure, right?
Right, correct, okay. Do you have lights on this sport court?
Yes, I do have some nightlights.
Okay.
What's to the left of the court in front of the shed?
Okay.
Looks like some steel post.
In, in front, right?
You, you, you can come on up and we'll show you what we're talking about.
What is this?
Okay, so this is, this, this, this sports court, and right over here is a batting cage.
Yep, right. Oh, okay. Got it, thank you.
It's a pretty, it's a big rectangle.
Yeah.
You got them all covered, batting cage, basketball, tennis, you got, with the golf frames. Did we miss any sports here? High lie court?
Oh, see hockey, wait a second, you know?
I wanted, I wanted my sons to have stuff that I never had, and be good at sports, that's why I did it.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just teasing you a little bit now.
All right, so your, so your neighbor is agreeable to a certain, to swapping a certain amount of land, but that because it, it's the amount of land that would be needed to really cover the setback requirement, he's not willing to do that much, so that's why we still have these variances.
That's why we have to adjust the fence.
Got it, okay. And so your neighbor's aware of that, so...
Yes, well, he, I guess he requested it.
Got it.
Just move the fence, just to move the fence, so in other words, when I'm looking, when I'm looking for my deck or whatever, there's going to be a parcel of land that's his, but it's really, it looks, it looks like it's on my property.
Okay.
And he's okay with that, it makes him feel better.
So then you, so the, your application to the planning board is actually a joint application with the other neighbors, so...
Right, I'm paying, I'm paying for his new survey and mine.
Okay, but from, for our board's, um, understanding, Jim and Barbara, the neighbor is a, is a co-applicant on the planning board application, so the neighbor's in agreement with what's being proposed.
Yep.
All right, so with that being said, are there any other questions, or are we...
Motion to advertise?
Is there a second?
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, because you have to put the sign up about the public hearing, and then we'll see you next month.
I have to put up my property in front of my...
Uh, in front of your property, correct.
Light it up with one always. Light it up with one of your nightlights.
No, John, no, don't go there. Yes, and then we'll see you next month. You'll go, you'll see Pam, and stop by Pam at some point during the week to buy your sign. Yes, yes. All right?
It's, it's on there, the phone number's on there? Yes.
All right. Item number nine is Appeal three six five two, Pierce Gorgo, Leon Pierce and Lauren Gorgo, seventy-one West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction are requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling built in the eighteen hundreds, and a thirteen-foot front line variance for a proposed front porch pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hello, how are you? Is there any kids from, students from John G. or Katton High School, or here or in so many schools here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to hang around here?
You're here for your participation in government class? Come, bring your forms up, we'll sign it for you.
I just didn't realize.
Oh, it's not that late, come on. And, and you can't tell us you haven't been having fun? Bring anybody at the board here can sign it for you. Thank you for, Ian filling which meeting you're at.
So who's more anxious to get out? You guys or your mothers?
There you go. Have a good night. All right, so you have a very old house, so one of the things that we're going to do is we're just going to make sure you don't have any problem later on selling your house. We're just going to clear up the fact that it's a pre-existing non-conforming, um, issue, but, so you're looking to add a front porch to your home?
Yeah, we have an existing covered porch that's approximately eleven feet wide, it sticks out about five feet. And we're basically looking to extend the porch all the way down to the corner of the house.
Okay.
Um, a part of it would be enclosed, um, and the other part would be open, the enclosed part would just be kind of like a mudroom.
And so we have a sketch of your...
So your, this, the side of your house actually is in the crux of the corner, is that what's going on? So the front's not, what's that, West Hook Road, which?
Yeah, West Hook and Cox, so it's right on the corner as you turn up West Hook.
So the corner, the porch is really going out to Cox Road, then? Okay? And they moved the road on you, they give you more room or take it away?
They, they moved it up, they gave us actually more, more room, so...
Thank goodness.
Yeah.
I don't see any...
No, I think it's going to improve the look of the home.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any...
I don't have...
It's supposed to be there, and we're going to put a...
You, you can't move the house, so, you know, I, I don't... All right, do I have a motion to advertise?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will see you next month, but Pam, she'll give you instructions for your sign.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Um, item number ten, Appeal three six five three, Jones, Krista Jones, seventy-seven Loganberry Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a one-foot rear line variance for a proposed addition and a five-foot rear line variance for the roof overhang of the addition pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I do understand that there is a little bit of confusion as to really what, what you really need, because there's no provision in the code that really covers what you're trying to do. Um, my understanding is that you have incorporated as a nonprofit to be able to provide meals for the families of, um, folks who have been stricken with cancer.
Yes.
Um, and so you, right now you operate out of the Knights of Columbus, right?
Yes, that's one of the facilities. There's a few different facilities
that I finagle every Monday that our health department approved.
Okay.
Um, but what I was finding was that just taking the food and transporting it down there was in itself, not only was it a pain, but it was also, you know, causing potential contamination. It would just, it just seemed it would be so much easier to do it out of my home.
Right.
So I first talked to the health department to, um, get their opinion on it, to see if I should even proceed any further. And they gave me some guidance as to what would need to be done in order to make that work. And that would be for us to build a separate addition onto the home, and then to put commercial appliances in the home, and also our ventilation system, our hooding, as well as, um, our flooring and our hot water heater to be a certain temperature. So that was the next step. So then I decided to come here to see if we can take a space that actually would be like adding a third bay to our garage, we're trying to blend it into the, the garage area, so it just is going to, but against the garage, and then we were going to, um, cook out of there.
Okay, so you're, you're actually building an, I thought the addition was just an overhang. You're actually doing an, the equivalent of a new garage?
Well, it is about, the total space that we requested was a twenty by twenty-five, only because we weren't sure how much of an overhang space we would need, we figured two to three feet.
Right.
So it was actually like a twenty by twenty, and then some overhang space.
Okay, and the overhang, again, is, is because if you're going to back your vehicle up, you want to be able to put the food in without,
if it's, if it's not good weather, without it being subject to the hazards of, of the weather.
So, I'm sorry, is this just for cooking, or is this also for serving?
It is not, it is just for cooking, it is approximately four hours a week. What I do is I spend about four hours every week making meals for a certain amount of families. They each get two meals, and they're delivered to them, warm, um, and, you know, then I don't use it for the rest of the week. So I do know that it's, it is a large investment for only a few hours a week, but I want it done right. And, you know, since there's such, um, a great support in the community, I think it's something that we'll be able to continue for years. So I just figured it would be best if we could build onto the home, it, it would really make stress a lot less for me.
Okay, are you going to have any employees?
I am not. Well, there's no employees because it's all volunteering. Um, right now I'm cooking for anywhere from ten to twenty women all by myself every week. So, um, I will cap that at probably twenty-five to thirty women. Um, we're waiting to see what our budget is. We have not gone out to our sponsors yet, because I first want to even see if you are going to approve this. I certainly don't want to go to the Dyson Center asking for the twenty-five thousand if indeed this is not something that we can get approved.
Right.
So, you know, we're going to figure out what our budget is, and then it will just be me. It, it may actually end up being one other person that does help me in the kitchen, but no more than two of us in the kitchen at any time.
But again, not an employee, what it is, is there's another person, it's got to be a volunteer.
It's all volunteer. We're not getting paid.
I, I, go ahead, Jim.
I mean, we could certainly put that as one of the conditions, in commercial cooking.
Well, because, because my concern is, again, a variance runs with the property, and ultimately if we approve this commit, this kitchen, it, the next, you, the next family living in this house could be running a catering business out of here. And that's, then it changes the conditions, so again, if we could put some conditions on this, then, um...
And I mean, I would even be even willing, I'm not so, I'm not sure, but I would even be willing to if we were ever to move. You know, obviously, we would, we would take everything out, and we could then make it into...
That's, that's very helpful.
It's a possible condition.
Yeah.
I mean, I would take everything out, so it would normally be a kitchen.
Because there's not really a provision of a code that allows this, and so that's why there was a debate about whether is this is a special permit or is it not a special permit? And that's where the confusion, so that when you came to town hall to, to file,
Right.
there was, there was confusion about really what were you applying for?
A typical condition here would be that it only lasts as long as you have the house, or, or if you, there's a lapse of one year, you don't use it, or something like that.
Absolutely.
But, but the, the overhang, the structure setbacks itself, that, that would be...
I agree, but the kitchen, the kitchen operation...
That stays with the, we're not going to make you tear it down.
If they could use it for something else, a family, again, I'm sorry, you probably answered it and I missed.
It's okay.
How big is the kitchen structure itself, not the overhang?
It will be about a twenty by twenty foot space.
Okay, then you have an additional five-foot overhang on it?
Maybe two feet. My brother, who's an engineer, drew it up. He drew it just a little bit bigger so we could then see what we were working with. We haven't actually had an architect give us the drawings yet, because those are thousands of dollars, and I, I just didn't want to spend the money if, if we couldn't get any farther than tonight.
Because I was thinking if it's twenty-five feet and you're going to take a vehicle underneath it, then it's only going to be like, you know, twelve, fourteen feet wide.
I think the overhang that he was talking about was just for the roof. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but he thought you need an additional maybe foot to two for the roof that goes beyond the structure.
Right, okay.
We're going to need a better idea, I think, of what exactly is going to go up. I understand your concern, you want the variance, then you're going to get, see if you can get the funding, and get the architect and all that. But we need a, a pretty good idea of exactly what you're asking for before we can approve it.
You're not going to build this this year in, are, I mean, at this point?
Well, we were actually hoping to, because we are losing one of the places that we normally cook.
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, you know, if that's something that we can't do, then we'll just have to work something else out. We'll just have to keep trying to find, it's very hard to find a health department-approved facility to cook out of. A lot of churches, fire departments, they're all exempt, so they don't have to have health department codes, which, you know, when I first got into this, I thought they did, and they do not. So there's very few places locally that, you know, are permissible to cook out of, unless I start going into the restaurant. But, and, another problem that I'm facing is that I have to have completely separate insurances to go into all of these places, whereas that runs me about ten thousand a year. It's very overwhelming.
In the end, you'll be saving money for the whole...
Yeah. Um...
Yeah, I mean, I, other than that, I mean, I really want to understand what you're asking for.
So would you like an architectural drawing, would you like an official drawing at next month's meeting that shows...
Yeah, I want something that you're going to have to stick with. I mean, obviously, if we grant the variance, you can't come back and ask for more later on.
Right, that's what we're most concerned about.
If you decide you want to go a little smaller, that's okay. And I want to see a pretty good idea what your house looks like and how you plan on making this meld in. You said you're going to try to match the garage and stuff, but we appreciate that. Uh, that helps us to go along with it. So, but we need a, a good picture of what you're asking for.
Okay.
You know?
I mean, ultimately, this impacts your neighbors, your neighbors are going to want to see it anyway. So I, I think, as long as you're in agreement that when, at such time as you move, that the use here stops.
Sure.
Okay, then, and, and that we would put that on as a condition, I think it appears that this board might be willing to move forward with hearing this out, finishing it out.
Okay.
All right, are we in agreement with that?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So that she makes that investment in the architectural plan so that
Yeah, it lets you come back or something off of there.
Her neighbors and we have a better design.
You know, goodness gracious. You know?
I want...
We need a lot more people like you in the world.
Oh, well, thank you.
So...
So, come back next month with a drawing.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to advertise for our next, um, meeting.